So what was this? On the long, the Saturday, it was raining, but it just started raining.
Yep. Yep, it's not raining this morning.
This is going to turn to your calendar if there's something on.
Yep. How are you? Slightly moist. There we go.
Morning. Mr. Mearns.
What's up?
Nothing wrong with that. So this is past the end of the month. She was doing that. She's only been in the house a couple of weeks. I asked her if she was in the house. I bet she was doing this situation. I don't have your company. Not even asking for your situation. Yeah. They're all in text.
She didn't have the credit.
You just got a call.
Let's be nice. Here we go. I feel special. All right, at nine o'clock, called meeting, we're in switch. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
And promptly moved seconded to approve the agenda as written. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed saying sign. Motion carried. That is for the wastewater pollution control permit for our bags. That was J six of the solar Kansas. Looks like it's all good. Anybody like to see this? It's just a lot of pollution from the corporate bags to J six. Can you get me a meeting? Is that anything for us? Is this during the convention or is this separate from the convention?
This is a, should be an active event.
Okay, December ninth. Uh, last year, it was me as voting delegate and you as the alternate.
The alternate.
That's fine with me. Are you going to that convention?
I'm not going.
Okay. All right, well, who that then? If this form is not returned, voting delegates and alternates will stand as follows. So, I guess we don't need to worry about that. Anybody need to see this? Okay, sorry. Yeah, we have some activations here. Morning. Hi Scott. A little much needed rain this morning. And we also have a request from Jackson Heights Post Prom for twenty-five, twenty-six. For their annual donation to that. We usually give a thousand dollars out of the alcohol fund. So I would entertain a motion to approve Jackson Heights Post Prom for a thousand dollars out of the alcohol fund.
Say.
Okay, if you promptly move the seconded to approve the Jackson Heights Post Prom for a thousand dollars out of the alcohol fund. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And are these just our annual appropriations or is that, did you print that off?
Yeah, it's just two.
Okay. So I'm sure we'll be getting the other few coming up here before long. For Royal Valley and Holton also, so just keep in mind those are also a thousand dollars out of the alcohol fund that we donate to Post Prom.
You might define what the alcohol fund is. It's something that we approve, that we budget money for alcohol. It's, you might define that as, like stuff like that.
True. This is the money that we get from alcohol sales in the county that we have split up three ways. Goes to park and rec, general fund and the alcohol fund, which is what I call it, which is usually.
Alcohol awareness.
Alcohol awareness and things like that. So we can try to keep kids off the roads and out of travel with Post Prom. So that's a good use of that money. Well, now it's.
Still raining. Should've washed it out.
And we did get an email from the Chamber of Alcohol Fest and one of the ladies was there to contact me and I said I need to jet to the end for the chili unless one of you is watching. Nine fifteen, buddy, you're up.
I think, rather than us try to parse that from the horse and rabbit, I guess.
What some finding small emails do, from them, calling each other, copying us, and about seventy of them, they're like, oh, my name is that again.
Okay, well, let's do it, if you get all these clear by the right.
I've done a call in last week for an episode about the speeds out here on the county roads, and I thought we got that person taken care of, but apparently they have not been officially signed, uh, thirty-five miles an hour, in the entire county. Uh, in the entire county, did we talk about that here?
We did.
The cost of it, I mean, by resigning the entire county. Well, we're gonna resign it, I thought we just did.
What happens to that opposed to speed limits and everything on all the county roads then?
If the posted speed limit is fifty-five, somebody's going to be like, Kansas. Yeah, it's just, as far as trying and speeding, if you say it's forty-five miles an hour, it signs as this five degrees.
I understand, but a lot of our side, have signed on a lot of our roads, and it's just, you know, county road's fifty-five, but somewhere opposed.
So, if the signs say forty-five
There were no signs, that's what I'm saying, so
It's not, it's not licensed, there are, so U4 Road, for instance, there is posted legal speed limit of forty-five, um, I know around the county, but if it is not posted, then legal speed limit should be five. I don't know, and I think that was one of the questions, was that we have the ability to legally change that, I would have to, we'd have to do some research and find out if we have the ability to do that.
And then we do, we do have the ability to do that. Then, do they have to be posted up all roads? And what kind of cost is that going to incur the county? That's, that was the biggest thing I think right there.
What I recall is, is essentially, there has to be some kind of traffic setting done if people are differing from either what the statute recognizes as a speed limit, or what previously established, uh, which is not, that, that can be anything, it's not like it's official, kind of say, you gotta, you have to go out and do every road, yeah, but you at least have to have some binding made by somebody that says, you know, safety of roads, condition, everything, recommend forty-five. As an overall speed.
Was there a specific road that they were questioning?
Uh, he was down on 166, so we talked about it last week, and that side road, he's pretty really drunk, and he's got brain kids playing in the road, and I was like, oh, fuck your shit. Well, they could give, county's gonna be in trouble, I said again, the sheriff and park, they need to take care of that type of stuff, and, uh, again, just, you know, I want to get some air, listen up for work, so.
Yeah, it's a law enforcement issue.
Yeah. And I tried to fight it, you know, without a resolution, you really can't change the speed anyway, but I said, you couldn't do two works, and he was too busy popping rocks and more of the nails, he can throw up, or other sort of things, so. I said again, that's the sheriff's part, all of the crap.
And I'd like to say, I want more of a clarification on if we do pass a resolution, if we are required to sign, put signage up on all the roads, and if that is the case, that's just cost perimeter for being able to do it, so.
So, it does say that there is no, fifty-five is the maximum, and it says reasonable improvement for existing conditions. Well, that's, that's translated as a basic speed limit, so sheriff can already, of course, just call the basic speed limit, that it's not safe for existing conditions, so right now, somebody's running down those roads at sixty or fifty-five, you know, sheriff's up at your side, and saying, you know, in a rainy like this, you shouldn't be riding at this road, and I imagine the judge would say, correct, so. So, Hottel Army County, as a resolution, twenty twenty-five dash fifteen eight, resolution establishing a uniform speed limit of forty miles per hour on all unpaid Hottel Army County roads, but I don't, I guess, you know, that might be an easy way for you to check with their attorney and see, did they have to go out and then legally post those, uh, or is it by resolution, advertise it?
The thing is, when you cut into their camp, they have a sign there, and you know, across that, they're all on the streets.
Yeah, that's usually what, like, city, I've got cities doing it, and what they do is basically add roads where city limits go to them, and say, speed limit twenty, and let them post it, and that's it.
So would that be, there again, would that be have to be done on each county road coming into the county from elsewhere?
Yeah, and I think the other problem is, is that, I guess, if you got signs to post fifty-five, there's just have to get that violation of mine, so, yeah. Yeah, I can check on the, section six of that resolution says that the standards and requirements established for such signs, um, in the latest condition of the main building uniform traffic control devices, so I would refer to it, if it requires that, then that's what we would have to do, but there again, it's a huge cost, um, as opposed to this gentleman, you know, calling law enforcement, saying, oh, yeah, he's off the course, it's all about speed, and so, for sure, for sure, I mean, that's one of those things, we just can't control, I mean, you get people, you guys all in the sort.
That's what I told him, so we put the design, there'll be one of the people ready that can do it, and, you know.
If you find out, it's all, it's all in the front. You say that every entry road in the county is a little expensive here? If that was the answer.
Is what?
If that was the, if my answer was, yeah, you have to do every road that goes into the county, you have to post this, or reasonably, so is that, is that a loophole, or are you thinking that?
Yeah, I, that's too much, I mean, that's
That's still be, I'll forgive you as hard as I can say.
Okay, so I was thinking, changing, you know, road signs themselves before you buy them, everywhere, and that seems
Really, that would be really expensive, but putting one up on every road coming in is way
Yeah, I have them on every road, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think I could actually catch some of the, that's, so, I'll see what that side of, right, coordinates.
And also the resolution that we've had, I think we gave, did tear everything that we have, or the answers, or whatever, that's all closed. Have we talked about the past few weeks?
Let you talk about it.
Is there a chance that we could get that information, go ahead and make a decision on that, but, take a look at it.
Sorry. As far as the, is road closure
Right here, right here. Something's really, brass and trees are running up in them, there's a white road there, um, I feel like this, we'll have to find some kind of a closure.
Can we have the microphone so we can hear what he's saying? Thank you.
Then we've got another email from Brightspeed last week, I went ahead and forwarded it to Todd, and called this morning from other collections, close, and so I prefer to talk also.
I've got, I don't know if you want to discuss that in the executive or not, but I've got
Got a response?
Yeah, at least that I didn't get, I didn't incorporate this one because people Friday, but, you know, I think it's more of a sentence, so.
Yeah, I'd say let's go ahead and do that, claims against county, everything motion to go to executive session, claims against county.
Fifty minutes, trouble.
I'm going to executive session for current client privilege, possible claims against county, fifteen minutes, reopen here fifteen minutes later, Rosen Bridge, or Department of Sports Director and the clerk, any further discussion? Period done, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, vote to carry, we're in executive session. My god. Like keys, go like
It seems I'm not the only one that really can't hear much of what Steve said, this is help, but I love what you all say, and hear
I've got my mic on, George, I speak live.
We hear you, and now we can hear him, but we can hear
I just wanted to let folks know, you know, winter time's coming on, if you have somebody that has a medical issue, please call us, so we can get you on the list to get stuff removal done first, with the advanced routes, bus routes, and things like that, so.
Can you put that on, on your website, and we'll get it on our Facebook page and on the county website?
Yeah, Aaron does all that. We talked to Brett Fletcher about our fuel down here, you know, we've got the tank working out here at the shop now, and we mentioned something about next time that we fill down here, we want the red fuel in it, which is for equipment only, and he acted like he didn't know nothing about us, putting, putting fuel down here at the ER, just taking some of his litter, so, up the day one, this was always our plan, we could do, drop fuel out here, have a couple of the fuel down here.
Yep.
Kind of where we're at.
Now, where, where are we at on the, uh, management system down there, is there because the manual system or whatever?
That's something else we told him to get put in, that tank, and also the gas tank, uh, because we want to get rid of that other company, you know, just go with his.
Now, was, was there something about there were no more openings to be able to put that in, and the one that, one of the, one of the bugaboo we thought that was, were there more openings to use?
Yeah.
I think that's what it was, that, that there were no more openings to use for a manual, manual system.
Correct.
I think that's how, that's how that ended, so I don't know, uh, what he's going to have to do to be able to get another opening in there, if he's going to have to have it.
Oh, so he broke that one out.
Okay, yeah, so talk with him on that.
Yeah, they're working half the time anyway.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that that was the whole thing on that, for the manual opening, or for the opening, uh, in the tank, they're all used, so, okay.
I've priced, and these have called today anyway, talking about the fuel monitoring system, and all that, and
Okay, perfect.
Then we've got, uh, insurance coming up, insurance needs, got scheduled tomorrow, the parent come out, going over some things, and focus on additional insurance to pull it up. Uh, we got the chairs brought up here last week for the meeting, and got them all taken back to the lake, so that's out of our hair.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It was really pretty simple, they were all in a nice cart, push them on to the trailer, and push them off the system.
Good.
Looked real well. The two forty-six bridge, they got it tore out now, uh, springers, we kept those, the I-beans, uh, picked those up last week, got down here at the ER, uh, cut the cross members off, things like that, been cleaned up before, put it in storage. Got the two, got on W that needs replaced, three three ten, and three eighteen, S road, we got one, one or two, that we're gonna replace this Friday this week, and, uh, we're on W road right there.
Were we looking, what, been done last week with weather, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, uh, actually, they're in the crowd, it's not too wet, I don't think it is, to go start lanes with that lockout across the road, saves around all water.
Okay.
That's a perfect yard there.
And you get on a few things that I was curious about with DIA and Brightspeed, so, we'll wait and see what happens with those.
Perfect.
Any else I've really forgotten? Okay. I did get one call this morning, uh, about Yes. I did get one call this morning about some of the maintenance roads up north, particularly he was talking about, didn't give you an actual address, but he is two miles west of Nettawaka, and, uh, there are quite a few minimal maintenance of roads up there that need to be hit, through hauling grain and everything, and said, you know, on, on those type of situations, if you would, at least a couple of weeks before you're gonna be hauling on there, give them a call, let them know for sure which ones you're gonna be using, so that getting somebody up there to get them hit, and, and go that way.
We, we did it on the operators in July, to be getting on these roads.
Right. I think that's how, that's how that ended, so I don't know, uh, what he's going to have to do to be able to get another opening in there if he's going to have to have it.
Oh, he, so he brought that one out.
Okay. Yeah, so talk with him on that.
Yeah, they're working half the time anyway.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that that was the whole thing on that for the manual opening or for the opening, uh, in the tank. They're all used, so. Okay.
I've priced, and he's got calls today anyway, talking about the fuel monitoring system and all that.
Okay, perfect.
Then we've got, uh, insurance coming up. Insurance needs, got scheduled tomorrow, the parent come out. Don't know if it's a thing to focus on, uh, additional insurance. Uh, we got the chairs brought up here last week for the meeting and got them all taken back to the lake, so that's out of our hair.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It was really pretty simple. They were all in a nice cart. Push them on to the trailer and push them off the system.
Good.
Looked real well. The two forty-six bridge, they got it four out now, uh, springers. We kept those, the I-beans, uh, picked those up last week down here at the yard. Uh, we cut the cross members off, things like that, being cleaned up before we put it in storage. Got the tubes on W that needs replaced, three three ten and three eighteen. S road, we got one or two that we're going to replace this week. And, uh, we're on W road right here.
Were we, what, been done last week with weather or?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, uh, actually, they're getting a product that's not too wet. I don't think it is, to go start lanes with that lockout across the road. Saves around all water.
Okay.
That's a perfect yard there.
And you get on a few things that I was curious about with VIA and Brightspeed, so. We'll wait and see what happens with those. Perfect. Any else I've really forgotten? I did get one call this morning, uh, about. Yes. I did get one call this morning about some of them making roads up north. Particularly, he was talking about. Didn't give you an actual address, but he is two miles west of Nettawaka and, uh, there are quite a few minimal maintenance of roads up there that need to be hit through haul and grain and everything. And it's, you know, on, on those type of situations, if you would, at least a couple of weeks before you're going to be hauling on there, give them a call. Let them know for sure which ones you're going to be using so that getting somebody up there to get them hit and, and go that way.
We, we did it on the operators in July to be getting on these roads.
Right.
As one of our individuals and the stop of that last week is he went in and started trying to crown and cut the roads. And this isn't that type of year.
Yeah.
You know, that should have been done already.
Yeah.
So basically now is the keep roads smooth or get in and out.
Yep. And that was, that was one of his biggest concerns up there, so.
That was in our safety meeting, we talked about that last week.
Okay. So you'll probably get a call from some gentleman up there that needs some roads hit or something.
All right.
Okay.
Where are we on the, uh, GPS?
I've been including Mark on emails here recently, just so he's aware that we are trying to get information. Uh, last email I got back from Matt, uh, which took like three or four days to get. Uh, it's kind of like, you know, forms are done, forms are ready, issued as a stream easement. Uh, something that we came up with at that meeting, uh, five hundred and eighteen, um, that we wanted to try to add. Um, those, we have worked on them a little bit, uh, I saw here and then he was supposed to do some things. And again, I don't know how to change form, I'm building form. You know, he, he lived in there that one day, was there for about an hour. You know, it's typing through this stuff so fast. I didn't really think for that. Like, so that's what we found out that we couldn't change anything. And so also, it was kind of.
So we got a straight DCP and change things now? Did it get you access to that?
Well, I still don't know how to do it.
Sure.
But, uh, that's why I asked for that one email, you know, is, uh, can we make changes yet? Well, I got a response back for that.
Okay.
Check with me.
He's got an administrative passport kind of situation that you modify.
We're, we're supposed to have the administrative rights.
Yeah.
It was set up and he, he was set up with an administrator also.
Thank you.
But he was set up as an administrator, so he could build these forms and do that. And somehow, and again, it's something they set up, is he can make changes on these forms and none of us could.
I'm just trying to figure out this two-step process right, right now. He's got a, you have, you have to have administrative access and you've got to be able to know how to change the form.
Correct.
So we've got, at least arguably, that number one, you've got some kind of administrative access.
Yes.
Which is, you have ability to change.
Or do you?
Right. And whether, whether I can actually go in and do it, like, you know, about now.
I would ask you for instructions and writing.
Yeah. Tell me you want a step-by-step email outlining, okay, so I go in here, I open this form, I change this, I do this, I do this, I say.
I would think they would have something like that.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Well, they, they keep saying, talking about how, uh, we've got all these websites that you go on and get information. But they're built for a fleet, not for what we're trying to do. So, you know, it's, you're assigned to a truck and, you know, this is what you do. We're not really assigned to a truck, we're a different, every day.
Yeah.
So it is a little different than what we're trying to do.
So maybe if customers want something, writing and.
Need something. And, and doing the everyday stuff, entering information in. I know I do that, I do that, I've done it. But to actually change the form.
My question was more specific, is it on each truck and on each blade that it's supposed to be?
Yes.
And they're actively working, yes.
Um, I did have one that came up the other day that said it was unplugged. What happened is the battery has wrecked down on the front, so it would go hours to run.
So we have access to that information?
Correct.
We, we were supposed, the three of us were supposed to have access.
I was having to check into it.
Yep, we're supposed to have access, so we can pull that up and we can see the same map that you do. So I'd, I'd like that.
You know, this is just.
Right. That's why I asked him to go on back too, is how people are absolutely going.
So it's.
And you're actively using that map, so. Yeah, I, I've got it on my computer, I've got it on my phone. Uh, that's what was holding up through the day. You asked a question, you asked me about how long was operation stopped? Appreciate it.
Got one more thing here, so we discussed about the disposition of superintendent for room bridge. We believe that hopefully Christie can find the.
I have no money.
Cash. So, uh, we're going to go ahead and get that advertised. So.
I need to have a motion on the payroll. First one I have to work, I'll wait and see.
We're going to change, we'll change that.
Yeah.
And I actually reached out tonight, last week, to Scott so that he could see what Christie come up with and then we modified it a little bit so that, so that the two of them, everybody was on the same page.
Good.
So it has not been postponed yet.
No, it says not been postponed yet. No, I just want to bring this up so that you can, everything and, uh, Christie, this is just kind of a rough draft, the job description. Have you seen that?
Uh, she emailed me some stuff.
It's the same one, it's, it's the one that I emailed.
Yeah. And kind of went through some things and sent back, so.
Okay, perfect. So we'll, we'll get ready to run with that and see where that can take us.
Okay. What are you talking about on the page? There is, there is a spot there for, uh, or like.
Twenty twenty-five.
Yeah. What weight was that?
November superintendent, thirty-five, thirty-three, thirty-six, thirty-seven.
Correct.
And then talk about maybe lower mid.
Right, so, so the conversation was initially that depending on experience, we might start someone at thirty-two as opposed to that thirty-five to give us some flexibility depending on their experience.
Correct.
And then some opportunity to move them on up the base scale.
Good, I like that.
So that's what we would have to modify would be to reduce that to thirty-two, their dollars an hour. Uh, that.
Okay. Yep. And I did have one more too, I guess. Uh, got a call from a gentleman about two thirty-eight. Needing some rock on it somewhere along there from Innes back to the west. He probably. He, he back to the west?
Back, yeah. Well, that's where they put that new rock down.
Okay.
And, uh, I went and looked at it with the late operator last week after he called and he's complained about. We, we did go to two inch rock out back because of how much mud was there.
Yeah.
And so there was a reason for that. We went and looked at it, uh, he called that evening. I saw the operator when we looked at it the very next morning. I didn't see these big rocks that he was talking about. Okay, it's, and it was all packed in already and so he, he went back out there and isolated it. And if you're, if you're off the tire, a rock that big, right, even like tire sample, that's one person. And when I mentioned that, and we're meeting this morning, because we're talking about putting two inch rock at one W.
No.
Out there, uh, using their cap over it, um, talked to guys there and. Well, I'd mentioned two thirty-eight, that's where those people, all the drives in the back, because I mentioned without having children, you know, that runs through there to go, I know you don't have, since they fly down there.
Yeah.
Again.
It's a law enforcement issue.
It is.
We actively know that somebody's going back and just reach out to them, have one of these officers go up there and set up radar. That's what they did down on U four road.
Right.
It worked well.
Yep. But they never had issues when we called. Called to, uh, the patrol road that we're working on, they said they're having issues. I'm saying they were involved.
Right.
So we settled with that.
All right. Sounds good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerika, blue, you're up. Morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Peachies one day, it's raining.
There you go. Thank you.
And then this is what you want to do. Um, so this is current active investigation, so I don't want to be too.
With.
Open about it. Uh, it's a county taxpayer, taxpayer, uh, property owner.
And, but who's investigating?
Uh, state.
The state.
Do we need to go into executive session for this?
We can.
Okay.
It's not our, yeah, it's not our investigation.
Okay, all right.
I just don't want to be too open about it, so I don't want to say names or anything like that.
Sure.
Um, I had a gentleman call me last week. He was very upset about something that happened. He heard a deed had been filed.
I'm going to, I'm going to stop there. Counsel, if, if, if any of this information is brought out, does it become public information?
Well, I think, I'm looking at documents that are publicly, depending their, their files with you already. So.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, I assume that the communications that we're talking about are, they can't be considered confidential in any way.
Okay, thanks. But I, I would, can I recommend that you pick these back up afterwards and then you're not a.
I can do that.
Okay.
Uh, maybe just say, can you put the mic closer to you and then turn it on? Does anybody hear her?
I can hear. You can.
Yeah, I just, we, we have.
She has a soft voice, so I'm not hearing a lot. Okay.
We're going to hit the, speak up or hit the button.
Can you hear me now? Oh, great, good. Um, so with this, on this.
Turn, turn her individual mic down. Turn which one, that's, that's, we're worried about that. Do you have a member?
This is a lot of talk as well, either of them. Having to talk loud to people here. Um, so these documents, yes, are filed, public record, in her office, as an AD would be. Um, this customer had some things going on where she probably shouldn't have been needing anything anyway. And so there is an investigation right now. She has not been many, operating in county or where she thought she did. So this is being investigated. There may be other things that come up where they may be requiring more documentation from us, but I've already given them copies of the documents that they needed. I'm charging for them just because of the circumstances and so that I said, and I said, so I just wanted to make you guys aware that way, something did come up, you guys know what's going on in my office.
But, uh, I guess, first of all, we have a notary, notarization of her signature.
Yes.
But law office apparently has prepared for this, or at least has.
Right, it appears to have been prepared by law office out of Troy, Kansas. Um, if you look at the sales validation with the not public record, it does say that these people were currently leasing from the property owner in the two years remaining. But they had one dollar on the sales price, which is why they have to refile the deed. And apparently they didn't have the lien exchange, it was just a mutual agreement. They didn't, so this agreement is, I guess, except for the buyers.
Basically, what you're saying is these folks are trying to take this property.
They're hurting on it.
And. It's still like, definitely not, she, she's not of good mind. Let's do that.
Her, um, family members are helping her and they've already hired and reached out to attorneys, I'm assuming, so. And had, uh, an attorney's office, even the Kansas Department of Children and Services, great help to make it happen already.
Do we know where the registered, the, the, uh, individual group?
Person who got the property?
No, the individual who had the stamp inside.
Uh, the notary?
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I believe they were with the local bank.
The first one is over, across on the corner. I am. Second one, I'm not sure about.
Yeah, and I don't know, because I mean, I can look them up and it doesn't tell me where they were.
How many acres did we have?
I think it was probably fifty to eighty acres and then had somebody. She kind of thought that she was needing an attorney to sign something or to be able to hire a property over.
That's too bad.
This is something that we found out last week and I've been working in the office to get all the documents together, putting them in file, so I have them all handy. And I gave them to her.
You turn your general's office or?
Uh, so right now it's just a local attorney office and then the Kansas Department of Children and Families. And they have the federal fraud protection that's happening on it.
I've got a three, I guess, get the facts straight. She says she signed this, but was due, but the description was not proper.
I believe so, that's what it appears, she wasn't quite understanding what she was doing, so.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think there is some things going on where, you know, people are really fraudently signing documents, giving to you. You know, they, the person didn't sign, didn't know anything about it and, and that's different from this. She's, this is more of a private cause of action because not that they, their elder abuse may be involved, but at least I think the notary is questionable about the law for her, but the notary probably wasn't at fault. Being she was presented with a person who gave her driver's license and I and whatever her name was, and that's fine. So, but it wasn't that.
And there is a lot of talk with our registered deeds association, I know London or Tommy more specifically is pushing really hard, looking at a side of this, but. There needs to be something better that can be in place to protect people against fraud and I think where that starts is the notaries. And I know she's.
Where?
With the notaries. Um, more verifying, and I know it's how do you verify it? They, they shouldn't be verified when they apply for the notary, but anybody can literally apply to be a notary. Um, I think there's more to it than what me and our London work or anybody else can do, but it's a matter of everybody lighting up. Standing up and fighting for and want protection, especially in places like this, you know, how do we, how do we do that?
Because fifty notaries don't read any of this.
They don't, yeah, they just verify the signature.
And they're just like, oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're not expected, I don't think, cars, not expecting.
Right, yeah.
So.
Okay.
That's all I got, I just wanted you guys to.
Thanks.
Be aware of what's going on.
Yeah, all right, appreciate it.
And then do you want me to take those, we discussed, so that you can have the Jerika's side back?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like that, I was looking at.
Yes, there is.
That would need to be in the executive session, if it's about a specific employee.
But is that really our place? She's department head, she was elected.
To do what?
What she asked me or emailed.
But it, but if it doesn't meet the standards of our book of our employee.
But I believe it says in the regulation.
It just does say.
Yeah.
With it all.
It does say discretionary to the department head, so I think.
I think that'd be the lead way to do that, and I, I don't have a problem.
You approve time or you don't.
Yeah. I personally don't have a problem, so.
I think with it, maybe just ever one day. I know she's going to have a lot of pain come off anyway with it, but I mean, it's, she's listed on, it's a visionary, that's a nice spouse.
Sure. I mean, that's the day and age we live in now, I'm, I'm, I have no problem with that whatsoever.
I did, just interacted.
I have a problem with it. Well, there again, it's up to the department head to be able to use that, uh, do it how they really feel. Well, there again, it's up to the department head to be able to use that, uh, do it how they really feel.
I think she's elected, it's...
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you guys have reading?
Alright, we'll see you later, thank you.
Do you guys want to do a motion on that case, or do you want to move on to the other issue?
Yeah. And so I, do you see the pay scale?
Yeah.
I have a current... Is that for the...
That's what you asked.
So, if you're ready... Hold on to your data, wait. Okay. I'm going to change the road bridge superintendent pay scale from $35.53 to $32 an hour, starting up to $36.57.
A second.
Okay, if you're probably going to change the pay scale for the superintendent from 30, say that again for me?
$32.
$30 an hour.
To $32 an hour. To...
Up to...
Up to $36.57.
$36.57.
That is for road bridge superintendent, okay.
Any further discussion?
I can take a copy of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, can I?
Any further discussion?
Alright.
Hearing done, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same side, motion carried.
I tell you what, Chris, what you changed in that, in copy of the...
Does he know what he wants?
Yeah.
Do you guys, are you guys hearing the sounds that are coming?
It sounds like somebody surrey is on, maybe, there's a voice that goes everyone's...
It's like, surrey?
It sounds like surrey.
Nope. Joyce, I believe you're up.
Thank you. I'm gonna say, I, uh, I've shared a lot in the last several meetings that I have attended. Uh, my husband has a heart doctor appointment next Monday, so I will be here. So I've heard a lot about what's going on in the family, but it has been concerning me, uh, that...
Joyce, you may want to turn your mic on.
It has been concerning me that, uh, you had not been attending the planning committee, um, public hearings about the solar farm, and so, Linda, I was happy to see you enduring the whole thing last Thursday, just like...
Okay.
Turn it back on.
Oh, we're making this a...
So, um... Okay.
So, Joyce?
Uh-huh. I heard you were there, I just didn't see you.
Yeah.
For about an hour and a half, you didn't stay the whole time.
I didn't stay the entire time, but I was at both meetings, contrary to what people believe. Um, I was at both meetings, and the first meeting that I went to, right outside the door...
Are you using my time in my...
All I can do is hear.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. So, um, you know, I've asked some questions, and then you advised me to give the answer. I asked if the thousand jobs that are being promised will be jobs for Jackson County, and you told me, contact Nextera and ask them, and, yeah, I'm, probably I'm gonna do that, um...
Because I don't know the answer.
If I, but then you contact them as easily as I could? You told me to do that.
Yeah, you would have to ask them.
Okay.
And they were there, they had a representative there, and I heard you say, "I will be here to, after the meeting and before the meeting, to answer questions." I don't know the answer to that, and if I walk up to him, I'm gonna get accused of fraternizing with the enemy. So that's why I said, it's fully within your rights to walk to him and ask him those basic questions.
And then, you know, I think the information might be out there, but I'm not being paid to do any of this. I'm just really, really concerned about what's going on. Uh, and then the tax benefit that is being promised to our county. Uh, Linda, correct me if you heard it, it seems like Nimahaw County is disappointed in the amount and how it's being delegated, they lose some of the taxes.
There's actually, on their website, shows the amount of money that they get each year.
And how it's being out, I mean, how it's being deposited and allocated.
That's Nimahaw County, that's not us.
I know, but if you can't depend on that company to do right by a neighboring county, and then, um, I told you about...
I'm, I'm, I'm not following you, Joyce, because you're saying how the money is allocated. We have no say in how Nimahaw County money is allocated...
I understand that.
To the different areas in Nimahaw County, so...
You're saying that Nextera is not giving them the money, is that what you're saying?
Not to the amount that they had said the wind farms would produce. So...
They're, they're paying for that.
If you're money, a lot of tax money from them, it may not become a reality, may I move on, please?
Sure.
So, uh, there was even one landowner there that has leased, and he's concerned about the loose language in the regs now. So, if I understand the process, the regs will come back to you, and then you will look at that, and then they'll go back to the committee, and then it'll come back to you again. And he even urged, I believe, that, uh, that there be legal advice to the planning committee and to you about the regs as it goes along. So, um, I, I really have done a lot of searching, and I shared with them, uh, you know, you can read anything when you go to searching, but the Associated Press, um, I gave them a copy of this because, uh, there's a company that caused so many problems as they cleared land to put in a solar farm, that, uh, they were sued and paid millions of dollars to the federal government and to states of Idaho, Illinois, and Alabama. So, and even the clearing of the land and the construction of these solar farms caused cities to have, uh, problems with their water treatment facilities, then that's a concern, let alone the other things we've expressed concerns about, hail storms and things like that. So, um, I'm, I'm just really concerned about the whole issue, and, uh, you know, I'll keep following that, but, um... A little very construction, okay? So, may I give you a copy of the Associated Press?
Sure.
Thing that I gave them. And as far as Texas, my friend down there has had heart surgery, and I contacted his cousin, and she said, uh, "Just do a search," so when I did, a lot of these companies, like Jeffries Solar, you can get a whole list of them, that have gone bankrupt and left people hanging to clean up their mess, and, uh, anyway, they haven't backed their promises, so I'm not trusting, uh, Nextera nor Jeffries Solar. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Dawn, what you got?
Well, I think, I don't know. Probably got to talk to them in the next, next session. I really didn't cover everything, I only have BrightKey and all my hotness. So, Paige, you're sort of hurt here, or other things? If you like it.
Works for me. How are you, Paige?
Fine, how are you?
I'm doing great.
Um, I've got a card that you guys consigned for, um, Dr. Mark's. He, uh, donated his time and the sound system, it's a meeting, and so you guys would sign that, that would be great. And then, um, I had a question about, um, Zoom.
Zoom?
Zoom.
Alright.
Since we only have six members on the planning commission now, um, I would ask to ask you if they could attend via Zoom, if that would be an option.
Yes.
For the planning commission?
We were talking about regular open meetings.
Regular open meetings?
You guys wanna set it up, and, and I think what you have to do then too, is that the Zoom itself has to be open. I mean, not that the people can speak, but if you log in and listen, and the same with everybody else, so...
So, probably...
Yeah, so it would be like the member would be the one who could, you'd see him go back and forth, everybody else would be able to... I don't know how to set it up.
I don't either, so, so it would have to be public, that Zoom option as well?
Well, I think, at least as far as, there, there isn't anything in the AGs, you know, talking about Zoom specifically. They allow, they allow for anybody on a public body to attend via phone, so...
Okay, can I say something here, I don't believe that, uh, it has to be, the Zoom link does not have to be open to the public.
Yeah, that's, I mean, yeah, I, that's what I'm thinking, is, I have, there's been an opinion that I know of that says that that, the Zoom itself has to be open, because you can call in, uh, on the phone.
And the reason, wait.
But you guys are gonna be calling on the phone to attend.
Uh, and the reason I say that is because our board of directors meeting for the, for NECA, a lot of, I mean, it's a pretty wide area that people have to come on for the board of directors, and, uh, quite a few of them Zoom in, so that link is, is for the board, but it's not necessarily open for the public.
Well, then you have to have a way for everybody to hear and probably see if they're visual. So you gotta show...
Yeah, it would be up here, yes, yeah, but I mean, unlike for the general public, if you get on the Zoom, no.
Okay.
It would be definitely members of the board.
So just make it visual that the member is up on the screen, and everybody can hear.
Yes.
Um, and discussion last week about neighborhood revitalization and the feedlot?
I've, I've talked to some people, uh, and my own feeling is, and the people that I've talked to, is that that would not qualify for neighborhood revitalization. That's, that's the answer that I got from a lot of people I've talked to, and that was my feeling all along, so...
So my question is, though, revitalization is on a building. You know, if they're putting a building there for a certain reason, I think that's revitalization.
I could, I could go for the building, but...
I'm not saying feedlot, no, but just whatever building, whatever construction...
If they're building a, if they're constructing a building out there, I would go, I would, I would agree with that.
Right.
But just for the feedlot in general, no, I don't believe that's revitalization. So any building they constructed there would be okay.
Which could be challenging on how it's valued, using the feedlot guy, so...
The building itself?
Uh, yeah, so I'll have to look at that for...
Wouldn't you just value the building, if valued in the other building?
Well, there's, there's a value for the amount of head and, and all of that, so, like I said, I'll have to look into that further. Um, but yes, neighborhood revitalization, it's just on the structure, so, but you, you all are agreeing with it?
For, for the structure, yes.
So the seven-year commercial plan for the structure?
Yes.
And then Carol Thorfinn was, uh, data collector, um, during Justin's time, like she, she trained Justin, so she was there, she has agreed to come back part-time to help us through, like, the end of the year, and, and as long as I can keep her. Um, so I have paperwork changed to add her back in. Um, so I don't know what other paperwork will be required, just people may come back every, like, on her first day? Yeah, second day. Um... So, yeah, that is... It would be, um, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, nine to three, kind of.
If the Fridays are happy. Fridays are happy. Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Tuesday, Thursday.
And you want a copy of this, Christine?
Yes.
Somebody want to date that, please? And then I don't know what you guys were talking about.
We will. We want good presents. You can open it.
I opened it.
Oh. What?
June 30th.
Oh, wow, okay. From that, I entertain a motion to go into executive session for attorney-client privileges, possible claims against county.
I move to put in the second session. Purpose of attorney-client privilege, discussion period of 20 minutes, starting at 10:32. Returning 20 minutes after that. With Kate's court, with Kate, returning the court's turning at this hall for the purpose of possible litigation.
Paul Second?
It's been promptly moved to second to go into executive session for attorney-client privileges, possible claims against county, 20 minutes. Here, returning 20 minutes. Kate, the court, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all oppose, same sign, motion carried for the second session. For sure.
It is disappointing, but...
Yes.
Ready to take? Take that very good.
I'm very confident.
Thank you.
Hello? Do you have a toddler there or something?
No, I'm just not going to argue with you.
That's what they signed up to do.
That's Charles.
Micros. Tag team.
Yeah.
On the air.
Time to take care of ours.
How are you?
Great.
They killed the dating stuff now.
Todd, you got anything else, Joyce?
Nope.
Heather did all of it. She asked that question or anything like that? Yeah, thank you then. All right. Good to go.
Don't have tag team partners on us.
Off and on. I love the reds.
You can check your calendar, can't you? You can fix your calendar. May I ask you a question on the Zoom meetings? Because I do that with a missionary group that I'm secretary for. When they're all local, why would a Zoom meeting be the ideal way to go? I mean, are there other meetings?
Somebody calling in on the Zoom meeting, not the whole commission being on Zoom, even though that would be legal and they could do that. If somebody had another commitment that they were out of town that day, if somebody had a commitment with their children that they couldn't make the meeting, then they could, they could do the Zoom.
Are their meetings public meetings? Are the public are allowed to attend?
It's just the Zoom person will be on the TV screen right here or across the hall or wherever. But yeah, public attends. They can have every right to attend.
They published in the paper.
Okay. Thank you for that. You know, the missionary board is from Arizona to Kansas to Virginia, so...
No, it's been like you say, somebody has a prior commitment or they're out of town, then they could come in on the Zoom.
So they're just going to do it if somebody is unable to make it physically?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Hope you know when everybody's finished reading the minutes. So I have a correction. The last page on the left side of it. There are topics of device sets that officials have not read the proposed regulations section. Statement is not true. My knowledge, one or two have not read.
Yeah, I've not, I've not read because we have any... We have not, we do not have any proposed regulations yet.
I haven't read them, I wouldn't listen to some of the meetings, but...
Yeah, I've read through what's, what's on the website.
I haven't completely gone through it.
So I just would like that stated in there.
So you want that changed to some commissioners have not read the... What was serving? We have no proposed regulations now. There are no proposed regulations.
But the document that zoning and planning is working with right now and is available to the public, I have read. And that was the question, have we read them?
So that needs to be changed here because there are no proposed regulations at this time, the board of commissioners or for this commission.
I'll agree with you there, sure.
I don't know how they can word that.
Templates put out by the zoning and planning. And the question was, have we read them? And yes, I have.
So I'm going to say some commissioners have not read the...
I have written my word.
I'm going to take out the word proposed because we have no proposed regulations in front of us. Have not read the regulations the planning commission is working on. Does that sound good?
I'm finding that.
So here's what that's going to have to read there. Any other questions? Okay, so I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from... What do you pick that?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine? From September 29th, with corrections?
Second.
Been promptly moved to second to approve the minutes of September 29th, with corrections, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all oppose, same sign, motion carried. Yeah, already did it. I'm doing it. Yeah, we're good. Any further business coming forward today?
I'd like to talk a little bit about maybe setting up proposed dates to start reading our townships. We talked about that. I have got an approach if that type of thing.
Uh, what nights would work better?
Might be nicer. I'm good with that.
Great day on Monday night. I mean, there's someone, there's the fourth Monday I don't do business. And then I do have some board meetings, I believe. One at least is on Monday. You have Albershady on Monday. Mondays are your Albershady, third?
Second Monday.
Second Monday?
You're looking in November?
I'm not...
I think in order to get information out before people have enough time to react to it, it would have to be...
I mean, we've looked in November, I've got October 20th right now is free. Okay, the third, I've got Northeast Gains, MultiHealth. That evening, the board meeting. And the 10th and the 17th are free.
I'll have to look through the table.
It's fine, you want to try the 20th this month? That's two weeks.
How are you going to get that, you guys read the paper this week and next?
Yeah, I have a commitment that night.
You have a commitment that night, okay.
That's one way.
So we're going to shoot for the 10th?
So that's going to give people enough time to plan.
Here, we got a picket township, and what we're going to do, to start with?
Banner Creek Volunteers.
Sure. That's perfect. What time?
We typically have those other meetings at 6 o'clock.
Sure.
That seems like fair enough time to get home.
All right. Would you contact Luke Kennedy and let him know that we've set that night for Banner? Yes. That way he can contact some people that he knows will be willing to come in and meet and talk about township.
Do you have a leader in Memorial Hall?
Probably just do it here. We can move around the hall.
Will the groups still have induction stuff in it?
On the 70th, on the 10th.
Yeah, she can clear it out that quick.
A little established.
Okay, that's what I mean.
Yeah. If we need to get wood chair, wood chair.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll put that on our Facebook page and website, and then we're going to advertise it the whole report.
Yep.
So Chair would say something in the order of any residents living in bounds of Banner Township are invited to come visit commissioners. Topic of conversation would be to talk about road maintenance and advisory boards moving forward, that type of thing.
On which lines do you want to move them to schedule?
From the place. Otherwise it would be a huge not getting the word out, so...
Yeah, not back to back, but...
Which lines is...
You want to move it to...
Yeah. That works for me. All right, any further business coming forward today? Hearing done, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been promptly moved to second, we adjourned this meeting, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all oppose, same sign, motion carried. Good meeting, Dave, guys, thank you.
So the next meeting will be up to you, sir.
Correct.
Yes.
Well, understood.
Yes.
Indigenous person, Dave.